Live.
Yep, you're good.
Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and open the regular meeting at this time. You'll notice on the agenda that the first item of the regular meeting, I was writing three on the agenda is public workshop, but we're going to take an item out of order relative to personnel issues. I would ask if there is a motion to be made?
Yes, I will be authorized with care of the order of someone to execute a minimum three and a half year contract from Speaker Wood. When we started the charter at ninety two thousand dollars and the additional amount of information.
Yeah, is there a second? Second, second by Mark, any discussion?
Mark. I would just like to take this moment to say that I think the relationship and the performance, especially between the town administrator and the select board, back to the public and the taxpayers has really improved in the last six to twelve months. And I would like to thank Becca for her efforts in that area to help us rewrite the operational people's township that was struggling quite badly when she came back in. And I think it's a positive thing moving forward for the town citizens and the taxpayers of town.
Other comments from the board? Sure.
I guess I would just echo what Mark said, and I think it's been significant effort from both the board part to try to understand better about work together. On the town administrator and staff part, I was working for the board. And I think we're, you know, we're in a pretty good place. And I also want to thank Mitch for his assistance through the board. And we got the town's, you know, helping us five and a half boards in a month. So I don't think we could have done it very easily without Mitch's help. And we do plan, we put Mitch on, go on board, go on as director. Because I think there's still more work to be done.
I agree with all of that. With that, all orders in favor, other motion on the floor? All right, any extensions? The three in favor, one extension. Thank you very much, everybody. A lot of hard work went into this. And with that, let's move on to any comments from the public. Okay, let's move on to the public workshop regarding the transfer section. If you want to key this up?
Um, yeah, so I'll just do a brief kind of overview of why we're here. And then the goal of this workshop is to be very open without really a set specific agenda, but just gauge some ideas from the public, from the board, from some of the employees that are in the building today in terms of what the changes that are needed and how the the area could be improved. So a little bit background, very briefly. So the town has been for a couple of years trying to work and figure out what changes need to happen at the transfer station. Two years ago, there were some minor changes done to the transfer station ordinance. Fees were adjusted by the board that was at the time. And there was work done around trying to find a way of maybe how to better control and pay for the brush dump. Ultimately, the changes through the ordinance went through. They were very basic with a lot of really descriptions on a lot of things. Nothing was resolved with the brush dump. It continues to be open for people to come and go at any time that is convenient to them. As you can imagine, the transfer station is really at a point where it has maxed out in its capacity. And as a result, we had to close down what most people refer to as the Macy's because that was a free service that was being offered that was just in addition to the town not being able to provide the services that we needed. And so after a lot of back and forths, they're trying to figure out what those needs are. Do the fees need to be adjusted? We have a big transition that the transfer station is going through right now, which after many, many years of Gail being our one and only dump goddess, she's going to be retiring in the fall. We have somebody new that has stepped in that he's done a great job stepping into the role and being able to take over. And so with that transition, the board really wanted to have a workshop where we gauge some ideas from the public about what some needs from your perspective that you could see could be beneficial and then take those into consideration and really work out some general ideas of what we could do to improve it and how we can move forward in line with the increased costs, with the barging demands and with the issues surrounding barging, the demand in, you know, cardboard, all of those things. And so and the the new individual is, for those that don't know, is Jeff. So but that's kind of the basics of it in a nutshell. And so I'll let the board kind of take it from here with any comments they have and then really open it up to the public. And we would love some feedback from the employees as well in terms of what you think would be helpful.
And to cap it off before we go on to board commentary, I would just like to thank you for years of wonderful service. Comments from the board?
Well, I just also wanted to add, in the context of the cost for our local operations, which is right now is a two hundred and forty thousand dollars annually. So it's actually one of the biggest incremental expenses that we have.
It is the most expensive department.
So and frankly, the wages are only a small part of that. They're about forty five thousand. So just to put it in context for people so you understand, you know, some of the big costs. Tipping and grabbing of brushes, about twenty three thousand dollars per year. Barging, we estimate for twenty twenty five fiscal year twenty five to be fifty two thousand. Waste disposable, pollen charges, tipping fees, that's ninety five thousand. And that went up a little bit from the previous year. So it's trying to be helpful for people to understand, you know, where the expenses come. A lot of it is in the actual disposal cost of the waste. And that does not include any kind of repairs, you know, other than minor, no operation facility that's just operating and sort of, you know, status quo. So it's a very expensive operation, I think, in the recent.
Other comments from the board, thank you.
Mark, when we started the town in two thousand and seven, we came up with a number with Bill Chang, town manager, someone's help of a budget of a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars a year. We were actually able to run it for about a hundred and fifty thousand for, I'm going to say five to six years. And now it's, you know, creeping towards a quarter of a million dollars. A lot of it is just the way expenses has gone up and the volume has gone up. The usage has gone up. I guess my first question, if I may, to Becca and the two part-time attendants that are here. Are we going to hear any identified areas of concern from the trenches? In other words, we're noticing that the construction debris dumpsters is a problem. We're noticing cardboard is a problem. We're noticing this is a problem. I'm just asking that as a general question of whether we're going to hear any of that identified by tonight. That's my first question, Bob.
Other comments, questions? I would add one of my points of concern for the transfer station remains the wood dump. I think, given a range of factors that ranges from the level of development to the age of our forests to the increasing severity of storms, the pressure on that wood dump tends to only increase. And the piles of wood chips are getting bigger. I think I'm not an engineer in this area, but I worry about spontaneous combustion or about a fire that got started in some other way but wound up in that area. How damaging would that material burning be? And I would love to see us find a way to put those chips to a positive productive use or the, I should say, the biomass, whether it's in the form of chips, stumps, logs, brush. Can we find a way to utilize that material? So with that, any comments from the two staff members who are here on what you see and what are your dreams and that kind of thing?
It was, it was quite a while ago, but I was riding by the brush dump. That was before we had all that mess. I was delivering my papers and I looked and there was a fire coming right out of one. And that's why I get nervous.
Thank you.
I wish I had a cure, you know, I hope I want to get rid of them, but I have actually seen them, the flames coming right out of the top.
Yeah. And Gail was close enough to the owl that it captured her comment, but when people speak, if you could walk up to within five or six feet of one of the owls, great. Yeah, anything?
Jeff Westcott, so for me, the brush dump is kind of a three-headed monster. Or I mean, the transfer station, one being the brush dump. We know it's an issue. The DEP actually has a regulation that it's supposed to be groomed clean at least once a year. So if you were on a concrete pad, it should be swept clean at least once a year to prevent combustion. We're way past that one. And we don't have a, we don't have a concrete pad. So that's one headed monster. Second headed monster is the transfer station in the short term. Setting policies, coming up with sub procedures and possibly even raising fees again to offset the rising barge and transportation and tipping fees. We looked at it briefly a couple of meetings ago, what other towns are charging, and we're kind of right in the middle. So there are areas, Becca and I went down through the list, that could be increased in certain spots. Third item is the transfer station in the long term. Really should have an engineering study done. It's been talked about. You know, we've done it as it is for the last 25 years, but going forward to the next 25 to 50 years, needs somebody with more brain than me to come in and assess the situation and come up with a plan. Long term, be getting training for hazmat and anything else that is growing in the needs of the transfer station world. We're not supposed on a town of nineteen seventies. Other possibilities for increasing fees would be looking at to recharge the non-propts. They create a lot of waste and you give them money back out of the town budget. And yet, you let them dispose of it for free. Possibly a pay-for-bag system could be looked at. You know, there's certain people that do one or two bags a week, and then there's certain people that come in with thirty bags a week. Doesn't seem like a fair system, you know? If you want to keep your house running at eighty degrees and pay for your fuel oil, that's your prerogative. But if you run your house for utility at much lower price, so you're being charged for what you are. Unfortunately, we're a nation of consumers. You know, cardboard is going to be an issue. Everybody brings in their ham and fruit boxes. Nobody likes to go shopping through the Dolly Andersons. The fault is ourselves. If we hold up the mirror and look at it, we're the ones buying all the stuff. We're the ones creating the waste. We can control that, but again, we're a nation of consumers and it's probably a long losing battle. Talk about the construction debris containers with contractors. They're not a big issue. They're willing to pay. They're happy to pay. It's more of the residents that are upset about having to put things in the construction debris. And it's not just construction debris. It's couches, mattresses. The grandkids come up and start cleaning out the yard and the barn that grandparents have been storing something for the last forty or fifty years. All that gets brought in and dumped. So it's not just the contractors. I've seen people empty whole houses of stuff. And they've come in with over three hundred bags. And it goes, it's household debris. Chills it up really quick. So pay-for-bag system would alleviate some of those issues. But that also causes a lot of problems. You're going to have to have more staffing. You're going to have to monitor. But that's a long-term situation. Thank you. There. Other comments?
Now, I'm curious. Last year, I knew that there was a tremendous problem with the hotel. And I noticed that they had their own dumpster up there sometime during summer to alleviate the pressure on our, on our employees. I was wondering how that worked. Would it be feasible to use something like that in the future at different other locations? So that each individual place maybe could dump their own waste into a container and they wouldn't have to use our central location? That's my question.
So a comment on that particular question, it relates to, from my viewpoint personally, as a former contractor, it relates to the concept of contractors having roll-offs at their work site. And it relates to a place like the hotel. If you have one dumpster into which you're putting all of your stuff, then recycling is not happening. All your stuff goes into that stuff. If you walk around to any job site on the island that has a dumpster, I would bet money that you will find cardboard in that dumpster that could have been recycled. You will find charitable bottles in that dumpster. Same is true of the hotel. I'm assuming if they have a dumpster there, they're putting everything in that dumpster. They're not just putting their garbage in there and just carrying recycling bottles down to clean or down to the transfer station. So it's an interesting concept, both for contractors and for operations like the hotel or other such commercial operations, but it's if we go that direction, we'll just encourage us to think about the impact on recycling as well. Carol?
And to respond to that, I, I think the recycling benefit is not that significant anymore or not, more not. The benefit financially to the town is pretty limited. I think that we are paying to transport electric trash to the island. So even if they are bringing it in, the community is paying for that. And I think we should, as Jerry sort of mentioned, differentiate between commercial trash and residential trash. Personally, I'd like to see the transfer station take residential waste period and commercial entities be responsible for the trash. And that's how a lot of towns operate. And for me, it's relating to the haulage cost and the barge cost, which is significant. And I can forego the recycling aspect to minimize the pressure on the transfer station.
Mary?
Yeah, I just don't know the answer to this. Is there, is there any kind of present requirement that for construction, people have to have their own? Or that, that, that an individual house is somehow rather than spot a little where it's own makes? I keep hearing that. It's a discussion about that, but it's an ongoing discussion, but there isn't any requirement.
No, I would say it's more a matter of practice of the company. If you're a builder these days, after you've gone to the transfer station three and four times, five times, and not been able to unload, to pick up load of trash that you had your crew go down there with, eventually you get tired of it and you go ahead and contract with one of the waste companies to bring your own container out. I think that's why some contractors have gone that direction.
It's not built in.
It's not yet a requirement. It's been discussed, the possibility of making it a requirement as part of the permitting process, for example, has been mentioned, but action has not yet been taken on in that direction. Carol?
And I guess I would just ask Jeff, because I think in my discussion with you, you mentioned that you just said that people sort of disposing of an enormous amount of waste as household trash is definitely a problem. And so do you have any idea of how we can address that?
It's, well, I'll wrap it into some of the mayoral stuff. It's easy to identify when the boatman brings something up to dispose of. It's easy to identify when Dowie's comes up, who disposed of something and they pay as a commercial entity their bags. But a commercial entity is also a fisherman, a house cleaner, an electrician, a plumber. So when he's coming up with his bags, hey, is that from your commercial job or is that from your house? You're relying on the honor system and it's hard for us to police it. So again, I think it goes back to, if you go to the pay-for-bag system, it eliminates all the gray areas. And it just eliminates the gray areas and lack of policing, which is how you can say, and everybody would know, oh, I've got twenty bags in my car that are bringing up a fifty or sixty dollar bill or a twenty dollar bill.
So is that what you would suggest is maybe going to a pay-for-bag system? I know I was burned on that.
Us in Long Island are like the only two regionally, locally that do not have it. And there's ways, a million ways you could do it. You could say as a town, we're going to provide you two thirty gallon trash bags a week. Anything beyond the thirty gallon trash bags, two per week, you will now be charged. How do you enforce that? Who gives out two bags a week to everybody? Just trying to, you know, lessen the load for people, so to speak, instead of all of a sudden it's now in place. But I'm sure Portland had people in uproar ten, fifteen years ago when they started. Now it's just accepted, accepted in the army, accepted in the free for.
So we're basically on Long Island, which is not somebody I want to model on transfer stations. We're the only other island that doesn't have a pay-for-bag. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I'd have to go back.
They say it works fine if people operate, maybe this, this day, when I talk to them, you know, the only thing I wasn't, they kind of operate on hunger system and most people.
Right. I know there's a pay-for-bag website and there's research that shows trash intake actually decreases between twenty five and thirty three percent. Now, maybe they're burning it, maybe they're putting it out back, you know, in the field again. But it is proven that once you are starting to take responsibility for your stuff, you're more aware of, oh, my goodness, this is costing us how much? Just like you look at your electric bill, look at your cable TV bill, oh, my goodness, we're going to shop around and get a better deal. Well, you can get a better deal by reducing your consumption.
Jeff, do you have any idea what we call the construction rollouts, those two construction rollouts? For Gail, what portion that goes in there comes from contractors and what portion comes from house?
I'd say three, three and four is come from the construction.
Yeah, what percentage of that container is? Without even guessing, I would say, because there's a lot of research, which I can bracket, I'd say fifty percent maybe.
I, because I hadn't earlier concentrated on the amount of old couches, but those aren't going to go in the paper bag. You certainly have a thing for those.
Well, it's couches, it's rugs, it's chairs, it's mattresses, this lawn furniture, it's umbrellas, blinds. You know, I, I try to tell people it's, everybody wants to throw everything in the household complex. I try to educate them and say, well, that's not compatible. Your pillow pieces, your pillows, your cushions are not compatible. Your huge tars, both shrimp round are not compatible. They just stay that shape. They need to go in construction. I mean, today, the six people that pay for construction debris containers, no contractors. Just people in the household with stuff.
You take your oyster fun. Carol, and then?
How the volume of household trash, the compacted trash compares to the rest? In other words, is that seventy percent of our trash or in charge of barging on this?
So I started keeping records in February. So to date, that's been seventeen weeks. We've had thirty one dumpsters emptied in seventeen weeks. Eleven of those have been hot as cold and ten of those have been construction. We were averaging over the winter, household would last about every two weeks before it would get emptied. Same with the construction, but now they're both one a week. But, but the, what you just, in those numbers, what you call construction is actually half construction, half household stuff, stuff, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I keep a clean.
I would, for those items that are going to go through the transfer station, I would advocate for charging what it costs. Figuring out the entire cost with everything from the cost of operating the transfer station, utility bills, the labor, through barging and through tipping fees. And breaking that back out to one of those roll-offs that we call construction takes twenty pickup trucks and costs us a total of ten thousand dollars. So the cost per pickup, particularly for two, you got ten thousand dollars divided by whatever those numbers are. So it's like covering our costs in a way that the people who are bringing the stuff are paying for that stuff to be gotten rid of, as opposed to the general tax base subsidizing it and then some people using it more than others. But it's not, I understand it's not always going to be that. I'm sorry, Beth, and we're in trouble.
Yeah, you know, we're kind of going back and forth and I'm hoping that sometime we can figure out a better way to deal with this. So maybe there is a microphone that you need out. I need it out, you know, I'm getting older. But anyway, what I heard you say, Jeff, was that it was more of the household emptying that is the biggest issue. You said you could deal with the construction that, you know, that's coming in. But I, but I'm hearing that when people unload houses up there and things like that, I in talking with our son who lives in Bound, he says, we have to pay. You know, where are you people thinking that, that we're going to be long term here and, and not, and not to have this for free? I mean, we've got to face the I mean, we've got to face the fact. And I think that we need to really look at that and I appreciate all you've done and I appreciate the fact that you aren't having a Macy's, because I've watched people come up and throw a microwave on there and say, but this really works and not paint. That is wrong. So I thank you and I, I think I'm being repetitious, but I think we really need to be looking at the issue of unloading a great amount of housing things that does not happen on the main. Thank you.
Carol, we will.
As one of him spoke commercially and anyways, yes, I do the same deal, okay? And that's just nature of the beast. I never favored selecting, uh, commercial entities only for fee-based. And I'm pleased to hear the comments that trash is trash, all right? And everybody ought to be paying to dispose of their trash, no matter what, that comes from a business or from the home. Uh, this town has given it a boat ride to leave the island and that costs money. Uh, as for C and D debris, as somebody who's had cans over the years, we all know it's not wise to transport by volume, okay? By weight is best and packing those things down. If you have the, you're kind of smiling a lot, but you know, if that can is on the job, it weighs probably twice as much as one that leaves the transfer station. Because they are smashed down and they are full with rock stone, same thing as CC, okay? So I don't know how to make that happen, okay? But I would encourage the town to be more diligent in how they pack and how they handle. I have questions on recycling and the white elephant room is trash. Trinket by its free nature is a recyclable material, material. It's been in stream before, it's going in stream again if it's handled properly. When it's free of lime, when it's free of debris and dirt. I recognize that this town has never handled it. From the end to end is a recyclable material, so this break in change. But there's also a disconnect between our policy procedures, fee schedules, okay? And the interpretation of those when one goes up there with a load of something like trinket. I am not trying to push the argument of the discussion that a truckload of white stuff should be free, okay? If as a business, the boatyard brings it to the transfer station, it should. However, what I'd like to suggest is that it's being viewed in different manners now. Sometimes it's flat rate, hundred bucks. Other times it's eyeball, there's a C and D load, okay? It could be much harder. In truth, I, I disagree somewhat with Jeff, it is compact. When they bundle them all up, they are very loose. They could be put in the bag so we can add to the waste stream by shoving the trinket out into a trash bin. Okay, and two dollars. So I, I'd like to ask the town, if you can't do it now, give some thought to direction to, to the employees of how to handle it, how to handle it fairly. All right, so that whoever I send up in with the load, okay, they're always, that's the way to put it. All right, they never assume anything. We always had a history of really looking at various containers, whichever ones were empty, whichever ones were due for replacement. Sometimes, okay, very natural load, it would squish in well. Other times it'd have to go in the C and D, so it's always different. But the fees are not, okay, pardon me, but the fees are different as well. I'd like to see something standard. Thank you.
Well, I guess one question I have is, you know, furniture and stuff for me is not construction and C and D or whatever. I mean, that's construction demolition debris is one thing, but furniture, vacuums, all that type of different type of item. And it sounds like we're disposing of them along with the construction grade is out where it's going.
Because they would, they would jam up the content for you.
No, I get that they don't, they're not appropriate. But I'm wondering if, you know, sort of differentiating those contains, because I thought there had been dumpsters that had like mattresses. For a while, there was a container that, I mean, it seems like maybe you should think about differentiating construction debris from household debris. And that's, and, and maybe charging significantly more for household debris. I don't know if her item fee schedule was practical, but, um, I, I think, you know, I think it's easier to get rid of stuff here than almost anywhere else, which does not make sense to me. You know, in Yarmouth or my offices, I have to pay through all my commodity trash and everything else. And, um, it costs money and I usually pay taxes, not a lot. And I, I personally do differentiate between maybe resident taxpayers and our taxpayers on Chappie and commercial entities, of which we have a number that are not paying taxes to the town of Chappie, but are not that any wasted. Maybe that's the differentiation for me that's important. So an island-based business is one thing, but an off-island business that is disposing of their trash in the town system without paying any taxes to me is getting a complete free ride, which I don't think is important. So that's just the key to the bottom.
So I think it goes back to that long-term plan, having an engineering study from somebody who looks at transfer stations all over the state. Come in, like Mitch has come in and given guidance. They can come in and give guidance and say, oh, this is what you're doing, this is what you're doing, this is what you're doing. Here's some better ways, here's some different thought processes, here's what's worked in other areas. Because we can sit here and talk about it till we're going around in circles all day long. But until something is put in place in front of us that says, oh, okay, here's a unbiased third-party opinion that knows their stuff, now we've got something to work on.
I, I guess so to respond to that, doing something like pay for bag is something we could implement without an engineering study. Yeah. And even trying it, you know, it's a complete disaster, it's a complete disaster, but I do think you're right. It's sort of an incentive for people to be a little bit more thoughtful what they're actually paying for. And I don't think it'd be a huge shock for, uh, you know, either, you know, maybe every household gets a bag a month and asks, yeah, if they're, I don't know a lot of the fees, but it seems like we, things we can do now is we can change the produce anytime. If you didn't pay for bag, if that's something along with, we can implement that. It doesn't require an engineering study. I do think, um, I do think that the transfer station could benefit from an engineering study, but that's, I think there are things we can do more immediately and that's one of the ones. I mean, I personally would entertain the idea of it too, because a lot of engineering do it successfully and it's always trying to make it. Um, and then I just wanted to add, the fire action team was meeting next door and they have looked into a biomass boiler kind of situation for the kind of wood waste we have there. And that is something, we didn't go very far down the track, they're meeting with the energy, farm energy group tonight. And that's one of the things that only is ended, but I agree with what was said of maybe Bob, that, you know, finding a way, sort of a win-win on the wood waste side, because if anything, it's going to increase over time. And so I do think that's, in terms of an engineering study, I think it really has to be also, you know, the wood waste, which I consider a hazard. And, uh, so I mean, I don't know, just the fact.
So Mary, before you go, and then Liza, um, we point out that it's six forty and we have this agenda item scheduled to end at six fifty or to decide whether to extend it or not, but we do have a very long agenda tonight. So if we can think about maybe trying to wrap it up in the next ten minutes, it'd be great. So Mary.
Really, I was gonna say, but that I think the idea of trying the paper bag thing would be really smart. It's also a way of advertising the problem. And we did it experimentally and told people, we're doing this for X number of months. And we're doing this because we have a serious problem. And you need to be aware of the serious problem. This is one of the things we're going to drive. We wouldn't lose anything. And we don't have to have an engineering study to do it, as Carol says. So I don't know, I think it would be a way to make it plain to people that there's a real trouble here. And to get them to start thinking about what the problem is.
We would want to think about how long the study or the experiment went for to deal with the folks who said, well, I'll just keep my trash in my garage for six months. So Liza, please.
Well, thank you. I want to speak a very strong supporter of paper bag. It's the standard of practice on the mainland. It's a paper bag, whether it's a nonprofit or a household or a business, so it levels the playing field. And I think that it's such an easy thing to implement. I think people coming from away get it because it's the standard that happens in other communities. So I would just propose we look at moving on that fairly quickly and that it have a long time to be a study of, you know, do it for a year. It doesn't, I, I don't think we need to study it because it's already happening in all the other communities. So we already know what the success rate is. So I would move for paper bag for everything that is going in that household dumpster. Thank you.
Other comments?
This is my go-to the whole thing. I know a lot of walk to the, uh, up to the dump, you know, six months from now and look at Jeff and go, geez, Jeff, remember back in June, we had that conversation? Where's that gone? I hope there's some relief on this right now. Go with us.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, nobody heard that because you're not kidding.
I'd like to ask a question about cardboard, uh, up at the construction station. Tremendous amount of cardboard comes up to the transfer station. Is that more in your opinion from just residential disposal or commercial? Big part of that or small part of that or how does that break?
Anderson window comes out and does all their houses. They bring up some cardboard. The vast majority is, I, I would say residential. It's all the banana boxes, it's all the packaging, new cabinets, new TVs, so on and so on. Doughty's Market and is probably the biggest commercial one for cardboard.
Okay, and then one more question. This is really not a question. This is really a opinion of mine which may be unpopular. I'm, I'm not sure that the nonprofit can be allowed to dispose of stuff for free on a continuing basis. I think it's been a nice gesture, but I'm afraid we've sort of outgrown someone more. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I am afraid to bring this up, but I had to ask about the transportation and barging off. I've heard that there is a potential time constraint about getting all of the containers off and where they're coming on and off of. And that there could be immediate solutions, but that sounds like, from what I heard at the last, one of the meetings, public meetings, that that could be, there might be a January decree, so I wonder if there's any background on how we're getting everything off, because it seems like that's a concurrent crisis.
We have an agenda, I didn't talk about barging later on in this meeting, but, um, the current reality that we're faced with is that we are able per DEP to continue to barge in the manner in which we all would barge, which means no, no concrete ramp. The concrete ramp that is there is allowed to be there for six months and thirty days. We're probably down to about six months at this point. So we have to remove that at the end of those six months, at which point we can continue to barge across the beach in the manner in which we used to, under the current DEP communications. And then, so that's the route, so we'll be able to continue to barge our trash off even after those temporary concrete ramps are removed until or unless the state of the beach has changed enough due to level of activity, due to storms and sea level rise, that we get back to the situation we were in two months ago, when the primary barging contractor who comes to that spot, that I can only do this at near high tide, as opposed to a couple of hours either side of the time. So we'll be talking about that more, but that's where we are with that right now. Uh, the option of going to the stones here is always there, but the number of trips that can be made for us by that commercial barge operator is reduced by, uh, is reduced to one third to one quarter of the number of trips that can go to bed. Is what we've been told by that barge operator, just based on the fact that it's that far off of the normal route. But, um, any closing comments? Vika, please.
Um, I have one to kind of wrap things up. So with the discussion that took place, um, Jeff and I had sat down a little while ago with the anticipation of this happening in the future, um, and adjusted the fees uh, based on what is being collected versus what should be collected and some recommendation of increases with others. So with this discussion, uh, if the board is okay with it, um, in the next, um, couple of agenda items, I would like to bring the recommendation to you to see if you're interested in implementing any fee schedule. Um, in the meantime, um, I will work with the transfer station employees to come up with a potential plan of how an implementation of, of bags could be, um, implemented and would look in the near future and have something, maybe something, you know, in the month of July, we can bring forth to you with a potential recommendation. Does that sound like a good plan?
Definitely. Right. With that, let's close the workshop on the transfer station. Thank you all, especially the employees for your contributions and thoughts. It is a big issue getting bigger. It is worthy of everything. Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item would be public comments or items not on the agenda for discussion, not action. Are there any? Beth?
I think it was three meetings ago, um, we talked about parking on the work and the concern. Um, I'm hoping that that hasn't been a way that we, we had talked about a recommendation of a workshop, but have some things happen. And I haven't seen it on the agenda, but maybe you have it planned.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would say it is on the list of future agenda items and it's currently waiting additional items that continue to come in that would make it a more productive conversation. Yes, others? Okay, moving on, the next item is town reports. Vika?
Um, all right, so, uh, to kick things off, um, I have, there's just a couple of reports. Town administrator, I have a memo about stonework and a report from the public works department. Uh, with the TA report, um, there's really, um, a guffle of housekeeping things, um, to keep in mind. So the town meeting is coming up on Saturday, this Saturday, the eighth, nine AM at the hall. All of the information is on the town website about the budget, all the steps that have to take it, including the town warrant. Um, the school and the board did hold a budget discussion a couple of weeks ago, uh, where people had a lot of good questions. And so that was really an opportunity to kind of get into the nitty-gritty of, uh, some of the numbers. On, uh, the thirty-first, um, the, um, the select board ended up holding an emergency select board meeting. Um, and that came as a result of, um, having a discussion with the town attorney and, uh, me looking further into the numbers of, um, the administrative salary. So over the last several months, um, there was the potential um, of us going over that budget, um, in that department due to the change in employee, employment, um, this particular year or the last six months specifically. Um, and so leading up into this last month, I believe we are going to over, it might just be by a couple of thousand dollars, um, very minimal, but I didn't feel comfortable, uh, waiting. And so I brought it to, uh, the select board. They held, uh, an emergency meeting, um, and added, um, within still the legal requirements of the town warrant being finalized, a warrant article in there um, to be able to bring it to the voters to, um, have up to fifteen thousand dollars from undesigned funds to be used to offset those costs. to offset those costs in the event that that item, that department goes over. And so that was updated, signed, posted and done within all the specific requirements. All the information about that is on the town website. So I would encourage people, if you're interested in finding and reading it ahead of time to, to do that, because it is available for anybody. We also have paper copies in the office. So you're welcome to pick them up where they'll be available at town meeting. Just don't pick one up and then expect one at town meeting.
So just one comment. The emergency nature of that meeting we had last week was only an emergency because of the timing with which the warrant had to be legally submitted. The discoveries that Vika made in this creeping up toward the end of the budget year that relate to some double coverage, if you will, on a couple of employment fronts in that six month timeframe. The timing of that discovery was very close to the last date at which we could make any changes to the warrant. We had the option of not adding it to this warrant and just talking about it tonight, but that would have necessitated another town meeting a month into the first, a month into the new year, which has costs associated with it. So the board made the decision with Vika's help to go ahead and have that meeting so that we could put that item on this agenda. That's the emergency nature of it. It was aimed at saving the cough with another, and the frustration and hassle of another special town meeting a month after this happened.
And legal, we did get legal opinion that in the statute that we're within the, you know, the, the requirements to be able to hold such a meeting. It's televised. We'll have minutes for it. So anybody, if you want to, you know, take a look at it, it's there. So that's the first thing. Following back up, after town meeting, election will take place here the following Tuesday on the 11th, eight to eight. There's three candidates running for three select board seats. There are two school board seats available. When I wrote this, there was nobody running, so nobody took out papers. So the only way for anybody to be elected is as a write-in. And so as today, I spoke to one of the school board members and they have two candidates that are interested in being write-ins. They will announce that at, on Saturday. And so people, if they're interested in supporting that write-in, will have a name that they can use, which will hopefully put the school board in a position of having five school board members, which is a full board in time to welcome a new town, town, not town administrator, a superintendent that will be starting July first. And the next couple of things, so some board meetings and office closures coming up. On the 19th is the next scheduled select board meeting. That particular day is Juneteenth, which is an observed state holiday. And so as a result, the town office will be closed. I had spoken briefly with Bob about this when we were talking about the agenda to see whether the board wanted to continue and hold a regular meeting on that or potentially schedule at another date to hold what will be the select board orientation and have select board orientation that evening or another time. And so that's a decision for, for the board to make and potentially in the, in the agenda item for select board orientation, maybe have that discussion. Next thing is July 4th is on a Thursday, which is July, yes, July 4th, closed for Independence Day. If the board is okay with it and in support of it, I would like to close the, the office on the 5th to allow town employees to observe it, the holiday in July 4th and 5th, and extend a long weekend for the employees. So as a result, we are typically closed in the office on Tuesdays. We would open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So it would still allow people to be able to have the, the availability to be three days a week. If not, then, then we'll, we'll keep it the way it is. So.
I'm going to check the census board on that question right now.
Yeah.
What's the census board on shifting the three days and the office being open to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of that week and before?
Okay. So following up with that, so this would, I wouldn't necessarily move forward with this with just the town office staff. I would expect that it would be all town employees, not a minimal, not a big impact on public works, the transfer station however it is. So I would want to adjust some, some hours, maybe open that Tuesday and have that Friday closed or something like that, if the board is in support of that. And we would put it out on Facebook and we were viewed in text alert and stuff like that.
Making same number of hours open.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Unless you guys want to be open on Friday.
That scales day first.
Yeah. No, no.
That's good.
Okay. So the last thing in terms of this particular area. So this is just kind of something for you to start thinking about and potentially have it be a discussion for our next quarter meeting. So typically, the, historically, the boards have, the select board would hold only one meeting in July and in August to kind of, you know, give a little bit break, leading down from the budget process. So does the board feel like that's something they would want to explore this year? Or with so much going on, does the board want to maintain the, the two meeting a month? Which I'm okay with. I think we're busy enough that we can keep full agendas. I would just highly encourage that, you know, with, with such a busy winter and so many meetings, that if it is the two meetings, then you kind of keep it to the two meetings to allow the board and everyone to regroup from the last several months where we've had multiple meetings every week before starting the process all over again in the fall time. So, but that's, like I said, something for you as a board to think about. Maybe not necessarily Mark, but, but that's something that could, you know, could be discussed at the next meeting unless you have a strong opinion. Yeah.
I just have one further thought to add on that question. Consider we do have the need for a few workshops coming up. And if we tried to orient those workshops toward that first and third Wednesday schedule, we could knock off some of those workshops, but it would also provide us the opportunity, if a critical business matter came up, we would still be able to deal with that as a, an agenda item as needed. But to focus those, I'll call it extra summer meetings on the workshops and on keeping them as brief as possible for the benefit of sanity and for the benefit of the public, everybody busy in the summer. But I think we don't have to decide that tonight. I think we can decide that with the board.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would recommend that. Yeah.
So a question we do need to deal with, however, on this topic is that next meeting, does, I think this board needs to make the decision, do we want to meet on June 19th, which is Juneteenth, even though the town office will be closed? Or do we want to postpone that meeting to a different date? Personally, I'm with meeting on Juneteenth. Keep it reduced to the Wednesday meetings, but I'm, I'm thinking of entering other thoughts.
Can I make a suggestion? So, and this is if the, if the new board members aren't okay with that, potentially have that be the select board orientation. I wouldn't expect, you know, our, our toy like Chris with a holiday, I wouldn't expect her to come and take minutes and things like that because it is an observed holiday. And so I would recommend that if, if we do want to hold that meeting, we could utilize that opportunity to have that be the select board orientation where the select board meets and then have that just be the agenda item. And so then that orientation is done and then you're coming into the July meeting in July as a new board with an agenda item.
I agree with that with the proviso that if we did have an emergency, a hot item come up, that we could have a 10 minute or 15 minute conversation about it in addition to the new forward orientation workshop.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to apply for this grant to be implemented, but that is due July 1st. I have a pretty substantial grant application, so we are going to do the, because I think there's a match on either one, whatever we're going to apply for. So we need a public motion to prove that match. That will happen, happens sometime. Okay.
So the, the next thing is FEMA. So the town finally does have a FEMA representative. His name is Joe Peck. The last couple of weeks, I've had a couple of conversations with him and have been working on gathering some necessary information that FEMA needs from the January 9th through the 13 storms. The, the way that the main, that MEMA had submit the information is, was by location. The way that FEMA is asking for it is by the type of damage. So it's, it's just taken a little time to kind of go through all the information and subcategorize it. And so I told him that I will get it to him by the 12th. On the 14th, however, they did schedule what they're referring to as a recovery scoping meeting. It's going to take place on the island. The objective of this is for FEMA to come and discuss the inventory of what they've received, identify what they need for documentation in, in addition to what they already have. And then they would like to visually see each location, which it's similar to what we did with MEMA, when FEMA representatives were here. This is just kind of FEMA taking it lead. And so, so this is, we don't have the time yet, but it's on the 14th. I suspect they're going to come on the 8th or the 10th. And so I would suggest that if a board member or two want to be present, that's fine. I would discourage for three of you going because I do not want it to turn into a public meeting because this is really guided at them getting the information and not so much for the public involvement. And so I, I kind of would like to keep that separated. And so if, if any of you are interested in being present, let me know and we can coordinate that. So separately from that, on April 24th, President Biden did assign the FEMA disaster declaration for the April storm. So we as a town, we don't really know of the specific storm reimbursement that we could submit for that storm. I think if we kind of went back, we can maybe find something, but at this point, there have, there is no specific storm related damage that is being submitted for the April storm. It is obviously an ongoing issue that erosion continues to happen in each of, or definitely a couple of the locations that we submitted. But it's really hard to prove that any of it is a result of the storm that took place in April. Any questions on that? Okay. Next thing I shared with you about, and you were in support about reaching out to JP Cog for an intern. Unfortunately, they didn't have enough interns and Shabig was not a chosen. They had over a dozen municipalities applied. They had less than a dozen interns available. And then by the time it came down, only three. So we just weren't, weren't, weren't a municipality that one of those three interns was interested in. And so the last thing worth mentioning is survey work. Last week, I had John Chwan Da come out here and I spent some time with him. And he is the gentleman who has been hired to do several surveys on the road. He's done several surveys for the town, but then he's doing a, a number of other surveys around here. We went down to East Shore Drive, South Shore Drive, Jenks. And then we stopped in this location over here that has been an ongoing discussion for several years about doing easement agreements for some culverts that need to be placed underneath the road. He did come back, yesterday he came back and he was under the understanding that he was going to be able to have the survey complete for South Shore Drive and have a good bit of Jenks Road done. So when that information comes, I will provide that to you. Any questions on that? I hope so, because it was, it was mentioned several times. Yes.
Specifically Jenks, Jenks Road survey, when they get that done, will there be any stakes placed so we can actually see?
I asked him to put stakes on all of the roads that he does because when we drove around and he actually had done some research, dig in through deeds and things like that. He seems to really enjoy that. And he provided some information to me and asked me if we should follow through for the expense or not. And it, you know, I made it very clear to him that we visually need to see where those roads are. And so all the locations, he, he should be put in them.
Thank you. Other questions, Jordan? Thomas?
That's it for that. The next, which it's part of the TA report, but I just wrote up a separate memo on it. And I'm sure most of you have noticed, last week I met with Public Works down at the Stone Pier. We walked the entire facility and determined what repair work needs to be done. Some of the repair work. And so starting this past Monday, they will be prioritizing the work at the stone work. The intent behind doing this work right now is really due to a large section of the area being closed off to the fishermen. And so the benefit that the town had is that a lot of fishermen had not started using that area. And that's where a lot of significant damage was from the storms. And so you'll see a lot of black tar. They filled in a lot of the homes with cold patch. And so some additional paving, or not paving, some additional work will take place in terms of filling up holes, including some of the really large sinking areas directly off of the ramp on either side. The bike rack, there are probably 90, if not 99% of what's there are items that have been there for several months. The process that they've used in the past that I suggested they use again as before. They would remove bikes that were flat tires that had obviously been there for an extended period of time, bring them to Public Works kind of behind the building and they sit there for several months. And so in the process, if somebody shows up and says that their bike was taken without their permission, it's behind the transfer station. And after several months, if it's not used, it'll either, you know, be donated or most likely thrown away due to the, the condition of a lot of them. Some signs that needed to be put up will be put up. And update stripes, update the harbor master little box where the fees go in. And so just kind of overall do some maintenance to the stone work. So it's a little bit, little bit more improved. So, any questions about that?
Board, any questions?
And then the other thing that I had in here was the public works report. So unless you have specific questions about that, then that wraps up the town reports.
Thank you, Vika. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Set a date for the select board orientation. This, we touched on briefly, what's the sense of the board in terms of having that be? What's the sense of the board in terms of, uh, having that be the bulk, if not all, of a regular meeting on the nineteenth of June? Do that? Any comments from the public on that? Questions?
So how long will that take?
I think that's an open question. I wouldn't think it.
Bring your sleeping bag. We stop absorbing after about three hours. I'll speak slower. But, uh, I would say if we accomplish three hours, it will be very good. For everyone to leave at that point, and we can always continue if we are not done with the important parts.
Would you want to be okay with starting at five thirty that night? If it has the potential of running that. Carol, you'd like to be up on that?
I mean, if we can do it in two hours, that's fine.
Gonna be very content, yes.
And yeah, so I guess just to kind of. While we're briefly on the subject, if for those in the audience, the select board orientation, um. Will most like, it will be a public meeting. Uh, but, um, well, the full details haven't been discussed in terms of, um, how it's going to be oriented. The goal of this is going to be for, for the new board, um, they will have a packet and they will have guidelines with. Um, information that will be shared with them. Um, and this opportunity will be for the new board. Uh, with Mitch and myself, um, to really orient ourselves in terms of what do we do as a group? How do we move forward? What are our roles? What are our responsibilities? This is your information. Here it is. Um, and so it's not gonna be an involvement really with the community and feedback. There's feedback, then you can provide that to us, um, at a, at another time. It's really gonna be an opportunity for the, for the board. Um, to figure out how, how they're gonna work, uh, moving forward. Um, so. And they'll have about a hundred pages of reading to do.
Alright, everybody go with that? Moving forward. Next item. The next item is sort of a. Update for the public and a bit of a. Thank you to the current board for the work that's been done.
I'm new on fifty-four.
I'm sorry, you're right. I was talking about the wrong thing. That's the Waterfront Resilience Grant Program authorized the town administrator to serve. As the designated municipal official on the application submitted by the big guy in the book. So this is a grant that is available to businesses, but they need, um. In effect, a sponsor, I guess I would call it. That sound accurate, Vika?
There has been a recent grant opportunity issued by the state name. And spoil up to the leisure storms, uh, primarily the DMO storm on coast. It is actually structured by DMR, Department of Marine Resources, DOT, in the governor's office. Alright, they have some very strict guidelines on damage, on areas that are covered. And actions that can be taken. They overuse the word resiliency, but the effort is really to make the facilities more robust. So that they can survive or avoid future damage in similar storms. Uh, basics of that are to elevate where possible. Alright, everything from the structures themselves to the supporting equipment like the electrical fuel, et cetera. Uh, where there's an issue of exposure, overtopping, alright, wave breaks are appropriate. And they go right down through the list. So the boatyard has put together a grant package. And within this, there is a well-defined municipal partnership. So there is a role for each one, alright? The applicant puts everything together and then at the outset, to see if you qualify for funds. It has to be sponsored by the town, the municipality. It's really an acknowledgement that we're here, okay? We suffered damage. We're trying to improve our facility and we are part of the town of Chabig Island. I didn't see at the outset, Carol helped clarify for me, the role that the town has. The state structured it. We didn't create it, but the town has a role in the dispersment of funds. So they're very clear in what they define and how that will be handled. But any of the money that comes from the state goes to the town, then goes to the business. Everything is backed up by detailed invoices. It says right in here, if there's ever any question on the completion of any task. The municipality is not on the hook for that, meaning DOT will come down and verify that things were done correct.
DOT or DMA?
DOT. Yeah, so it's defined by them. So really what I'm asking tonight is that the Board Select authorizes a single individual. Hopefully the town administrator to act as the municipal contact. There's a sign, uh, one page that's, um. Needs a signature. The application is submitted, they're due on June tenth. The funds may be available in late summer or August. It's all to be determined. Based upon the amount of requests, location requests, the type of. The type of information that they get and have to evaluate. Um, so there's no guarantee. The program is structured on the one-on-one match. So it's not a hundred percent funding of any efforts. Um, every dollar is received from the state has to be matched by one dollar from the entity that applies. Any question?
Then what's the amount of the request?
We're still trying to define that, David, alright? It's so hard to get construction estimates for tasks to get people on site. I have had, um, our permit consultant, Tim Forrester, out. To identify various areas that need federal and state permitting to begin that direction. Any of those would also need town approval, so they're not independent of town approval. Eliminating the docks, it's difficult to get a detailed estimate, so we're able to go through materials to go through the other things. To define it, um, I'm still compiling a task, it's several hundred thousand.
Um, what would be the town? How will we deal with that on the town budget? We're not managing. It's a passer. So if the state dictates that the project is two hundred thousand dollars, the state would give. A hundred thousand dollars and the boatyard would give a hundred thousand dollars. The town would probably have no funds.
So the boatyard wouldn't receive our hundred thousand dollars until the work was completed, under contract, invoiced appropriately. Submitted through the municipality to the state. Funding then comes back to the town and then to the company. Okay, it's circuitous, but it is what it is.
And I just wanna add that, you know, this is a unique program that sort of grew out of the past. Realization by the Department of Marine Resources that a lot of private working waterfronts is not eligible. In the same way as a municipal working waterfront company. Alright, so there was sort of this hole. And so it's a unique program and that's why it's going through the town, because it's not common for the state. Provide grant funds directly to a private business. But these are, these funds are only available to working waterfront. That have been impacted by the storm. So it's not any commercial, this, you know, dock owner, you have to. You know, justify that you serve commercial vision. And, uh. The boatyard is out of particularly in its fuel supply, so that's. And also frankly, as we found out during the storm, it's also the only source of fuel for the entire town. So it's a pretty critical piece of infrastructure for the community. So I'm glad that the boatyard was applied and I supported. Given that, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to serve as a designated municipal official on the. Chabig Island Boat Yards application for the. Uh, working waterfront resiliency grant funding.
Did you mention Vika as the person? Thank you. Discussion by the board? Any comments from the public? Motion on the floor, all of theirs. Alright, yeah, moving on, um. There is a lot that this board and Vika, with the help of. Vika's staff have taken on in the last several months that, um. I thought it would be appropriate, we thought, and I thought it would be appropriate to add to the agenda as an update. For the public and as a thank you to this board and Vika and her staff for the, for the work that's been done. Um, all of which, all of which leads to more work in the future. So three areas that we're gonna talk about now, and then we'll talk about barging separately in a little bit here, uh, the stone pier. So this select board's direction, uh, going back a couple of years now. Was to combine three pieces of work that had been contemplated and were underway or completed. Um, from three different contractors, engineering, design kind of people. And those three items are to increase pedestrian and traffic safety on the stone pier. Uh, to deal with the threats to the stone pier and its adjacent areas due to sea level rise and storm severity. And parking at and near the stone pier. The strategy was to bring those three projects under one umbrella with an engineering firm who could build on that earlier work. And, um, with the addition of a more robust data-driven approach to sea level rise. Analysis and scenarios. Uh, we went through our RSP and RFQ process, request for qualifications and request for proposal process. And selected a company called Weston Sampson, who brought a partner along with them known as, uh, the Woods Hole Group. The Woods Hole Group is, I think, pretty clearly the leading provider of such analysis. At least in New England, if not in the country at this point in time. And, um, those were the two companies with whom we set out, with a contract to Weston Sampson, who subbed out part of it to Woods Hole. The challenge was to refine the conceptual designs in light of that sea level rise analysis. We're now within a couple of weeks of receiving the final analysis. The data has been gathered for the sea level rise analysis. There was a hiccup early on that we became aware of last fall. The original proposal contemplated using data. Regarding the thimetry, the bottom of the ocean floor in our area. That the state is gathering with the help of NOAA for the entire state. That project wound up way behind, and instead of waiting for that to catch up. Which would have been waiting really a couple of years for us to move forward on the stone pier. The board made the decision to move forward with, um. Having Woods Hole Group contract, uh, the thimetry analysis, underwater survey basically. Of the area to the north of the stone pier and then combine that with data that was already available to us. For the area to the south of the stone pier that was available to us by way of the, uh, dredging work that had been done for. And to use that data as the basis from which to generate. Wave run-up analysis and, and basically to tell us what we need to do to provide. Safe access to the ferry in light of sea level rise for a given time period. Uh, one thing that came clear in this discussion was that. The direction of both the state and the federal authorities these days relative to sea level rise analysis has moved away from. This is what we think is gonna happen in fifty years. That's what you need to do. And has moved toward an approach that says, we're pretty sure what's gonna happen in fifty years. We're somewhat less sure what's gonna happen in twenty years. Really have some ideas, but no certainty about fifty years. So design for adaptability. Come up with a solution for, let's say, a twenty-year time horizon, twenty-five-year time horizon, and then, um. Make that design adaptable so that in fifteen years you can start planning for what we know then is coming down the road. If you add a foot now, in ten years you might decide that in twenty years from then you need to add another foot. That kind of adaptability. So the quick update is that, um. We're in the process of getting that final analysis on the sea level rise and then. We will begin working on the next step, which would be actual design work of the solution. Uh, we're leaning toward at this point, uh, what we're calling Phase AB of, uh, the. Conceptual designs that have been shared with us. There will be a workshop, uh, in the near future with Weston Sampson and Woods Hole Group. To go through all of that information. AB will most likely focus on. Increased pedestrian and traffic safety by way of moving some of the parking off the stone pier. Into additional parking areas. The net of the movement of parking will be at least the number of parking spaces we have now, but most likely quite a few more. Um, that circular traffic flow in the form of two lanes that came out in the design charades a couple of years ago. Is the centerpiece of the design. There would also be. An increased designation and reliance on pedestrian pathways that are off limits to cars. As much as is humanly possible with design. We've come up with some pretty good ideas on that. So that's where we are on the stone pier. From a funding standpoint, uh, as some of you will re- remember from the budget conversations. Our current capital funds plus the proposed budgets, um. Allocated new capital for the stone pier. What was that? About six hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we're having to do for our part. Of funding such projects from a cash standpoint. We would also participate by way of funding and we'll also hopefully get grant money from different authorities and different. Some of you will know that Congress this year took a long time to approve this year's budget. It just happened back in April, I believe, and we learned that. That then freed up the taps for what are called congressionally directed spending. Uh, there was a very short time window with which to apply for such money. And we really didn't have a whole lot of experience in applying for that, but with Vika's help, uh, the board was able to. Put in an application for some money for the stone pier, phase A, phase B, and we submitted that request for. Loosely defined earmarks to both Shelley Pingree's office and Susan Collins' office. They had a lot of questions for us that came back that were pretty indicative of us being new at doing this, but they were very supportive. And we've now received notification from each of those two offices that each of those two congressional representatives. Has chosen to put our project on their list of things to go after this year. Does not mean we'll get it, it means they'll go after it. Susan Collins redirected our request toward the committee that she chairs. That's a good sign. And Shelley Pingree redirected, uh, our request to, um. Her version of where she has the most interest. Last year Shelley Pingree's fifteen requests all got funded. So, I'm. I think as a board, we all want to be very, very cautious in saying, um. It's just the beginning of what we need for funding. It's a pretty small beginning of what we need for funding. The most important aspect may be how much we all learned about how you do this stuff. So, um, and then there's a new program that was announced a couple of weeks ago. Applications are due by the end of this month. Basically, the governor's fund toward resiliency, and I think we're hoping to apply for money that would support. Perhaps the, um. Thirty percent design level, uh, the engineering that goes into a thirty percent design. Thirty percent design is the standard that a lot of agencies like DOT and like the federal government. Will want to see before actually signing off on the project. And we, we have conceptual design at this point that is in the process of. Coming to the board, coming to the public to be finalized, but the next step will be that thirty percent. So that's a quick recap on the stone pier. And again. Anybody can ask questions if they want. I'd rather not go into huge detailed discussions tonight. This is just an update of where this board has been. Uh, where the new board will pick up and keep the ball low. The second item to talk about is, um. Roads under threat from climate change. As you all know, East Shore Drive, South Shore Drive and Bennett's all saw dramatic impact from these storms. We may not see storms like that for the next five, ten years, next fifty years. We may see three storms like that. We just don't know. Um, wanna commend Public Works and Vika and her staff for the work they did. Bringing things together to try to move forward on appropriate repairs on those three areas, and they're three dramatically different areas. East Shore Drive, we've concluded that our crew can make what I would call. Uh, medium-term repairs and strengthening of that exposure, that road exposure, subject to the results of survey. Uh, South Shore Drive, um, surveying being done there as well. Dramatically different situation, a much steeper and much more exposed clay bank down there. A much steeper and much more exposed clay bank down there. But surveying is the first step in that direction. And Bennetts, the sand movement that is normal in a dune like that, moved a lot during those storms and is a big part of what's led to our current challenges in addition to the public challenges of that location. So again, a lot of work on the part of this board and Vika and her crew that's working through those issues, but if you think of what a town administrator works on or what a board works on, it's really easy to make comments about how a board or a town administrator need to be proactive, not reactive. And Mitch makes the point, you have to do both. You can't ignore situations that come up that are unexpected. You have to react to situations like those storms. You also can't avoid long-term planning. Really, as a group, as a civic body, we have to, and as a town, we all have to look at all of those things. React and be proactive, deal with the unexpected and deal with the things that happen. And the crew's done a great job, and the board has done a great job with that this year. The last item to be mentioned is the work that the facilities committee has done on the new public safety building. The design of the new public safety building. For those of you who haven't seen it, and who knows, I'll back up a little bit. The need for a new public safety building is based on two primary factors, as I understand it. And I'll ask Beth to jump in and add as appropriate. A, not just on Chubig, but throughout Maine and throughout New England, the days of volunteer fire departments and volunteer rescue crews are challenged by volunteers aging out, by the aging of our population, and by changes in the social approach that our society is taking to such work. Bottom line, we will have an increasing reliance on what are loosely referred to as per diem arrangements in the future, where we'll have to have people out here who are paid who come from other places and therefore need a place to sleep. Our current fire department and rescue department is also inadequate in terms of federal and state regulations, code issues, the ability to upgrade equipment. So for those two basic sets of reasons, we need a new public safety building. It will be a decision of town meeting as to whether we pay for that or not. But the facilities committee has done a wonderful job putting together a lot of input from a lot of the involved parties and working with an architect firm from Portland to come up with a design that the town will decide, I would offer as appropriate for this. Next steps on that will include sharing the designs with the public in a workshop format. Ideally, maybe sometime this summer, late summer, early fall, to be determined, and to begin looking at funding for that. So those are the three major long-term issues that this board and Vika and her crew have been wrestling with. And again, it's time to transition, but thank you to this board and the board. All the support, all that stuff, and to Vika and her crew.
I just have a couple of comments to that. So in terms of the the new safety building, public safety building in work with the the company that was hired, Port City Architects, it was determined that the most cost-effective way to go is to go with the new building versus renovating the existing one. So a study was done to make that determination. I think that's something worth mentioning. And then the other part, kind of stepping back to some of the roads under threat. Bob did cover a lot of the major ones where there are very drastic impacts and erosion. But they're not the only roads that the town is having to focus on. Work has been done on Central Landing, more work needs to be done down Waldo Point, public access, Fenderson Road, public access, Hamilton Beach, public access. So the town is dealing with the challenge of Jank's Road. A lot of these areas that are making it very difficult for public access and easy accessibility. So while that's some of the roads, there's a lot of them on the list that the town is focusing.
Including, I think you can notice you may have mentioned this, but our Ditches and Culvers are in a different situation than you would normally expect them to be if you looked 10 years ago, 10 years forward because of those increased storm effects, the amount of rains coming down, the severity of the storms. Anything else, Vika? Beth, anything to add?
I don't think so. You know, we're going to have an open house, and this is going back to the facility. We, it's a phase, it's phased, and we've done phase one by getting the town office in shape so that it can stay there for a while, excuse me, and not have to redo. And then we're looking at funding, and we're also very much aware of the appetite, for no better word, of the community to fund something that would be quite a bit of money. So we're looking at, when do we do that? When can we get funding? This is not going to happen tomorrow. And that's why we've got a great group of people that are working together. And that's all I want to say at this point. And thank you for not saying she wants to do it.
Thanks, Beth. Mark and Paul.
Very close, they're back on the stone, weren't they? You're right, well, I think the community and the board is going to get to a place where you're going to recommend a project that's going to improve that stone warp and some faster. But included in that is the part that we've been dragging our feet on for years, and I apologize for moving to this. And that's widening the stone warp road. What the widening of the stone warp road, hopefully with some successful negotiations with the golf course for the piece of property down to the right, is going to be a major part of this entire improvement for the stone warp. It's going to have to be. And we could have widened the stone warp road without improving the stone warp. We've chosen not to do that right in between, but I just want to reinforce that that will be a crucial addition to that project.
Thank you. Paul, you have something to add?
Actually, it's very same carpet, and that could be carpet smart and ready to light. I guess I view it differently in that respect to all the long lead decisions and high-level decisions associated with the war. But we have money to pave that road. If we separate it and treat it as a road issue, independent from the war, if it's not parking, it's not, it's just the road needs to be wide enough so that people are actually going to pave it, knowing all the facts. That's got nothing to do with sea levels.
Any other comments from the board on this agenda? Any other comments from the public? Okay, thank you, everybody. Next item, to discuss long-term barging solution when we're taking necessary. We talked about it briefly earlier. There have been a lot of ideas over the years thrown around about different ways to approach how we barge onto and off of the island. As our population grows and the nature of our country grows and changes in different ways, those demands have increased. Does anyone from the board have any comments to make about an appropriate direction for a long-term solution for barging for the town, community, residents, and visitors?
I think what we need to do is work with the Department of D E C D, no, excuse me, M D O T, to come up with a solution. The solution that we can have right now, I think Bob alluded to it earlier, only goes to December. After December, we're going to be back in the same typical location we were in a couple of months ago. And I think we need to work with the state to come up with a solution that makes Bennetts Cove usable for the town and usable for the people who live in that area. And I, and I, I do sympathize with anybody who lives in that area, that that's got to be considered. You can't just rely on and do it legally and not consider the people or religions. But the first step, I think, is to meet with DOT and find out if there's any way we can extend the seven months, I believe it is, period, when we can have have the stones down there to drive off the, what do they call it?
Likes?
Yeah, likes, thank you. They're going to come up in December, and after that, who knows what we're going to have. And I, I know, I'm just afraid we don't have any other solutions handy. The stone warp, that's a couple of things. First of all, it's too small to bring in some of the loads that are coming in Bennetts Cove. Secondly, it's too small for the, for the size of the vehicles that are being removed. And it's going to be an extra cost to the town to come down that extra distance. And it may not even be possible for Lionel Plant to work that into the schedule. So we've got a lot of things going against using the stone warp. Sunset Landing, we've talked about Sunset Landing for years. That still could be a possibility, but it's not going to be ready in December. So I don't think that Sunset Landing is really to be considered at this point. So as I say, what I think we ought to be doing is for a couple of us on the board to be taking a trip through Agusta and talking with the M D O T about what we can do to solve this problem.
Thanks, David. Any other comments from the board?
I don't disagree with a lot of what David has said. If you look at the three areas where barging could work from Chubig Island to Stone Warp, obviously, that's a little diagram that's been kind of working for some capacity. Bennetts Cove has been used, you know, in the past, and obviously is the main hub at this point. There have been some designs and studies of Sunset Landing that I've looked at personally. I haven't liked the designs that I've seen for the actual large-ramp facility structure. I haven't liked some of the geographical pitch of this property. I don't like how far it is from North Road down, getting down to Sunset when winter hits, even if we had a better access road viewed as a municipality for accessibility and maintenance all year round, is my point. Stone Warp, Bennetts Cove, pretty easy to get to with winter maintenance equipment to make it accessible. Unfortunately, I think we're probably going to have to look at, is it possible to do anymore down in Bennetts Cove? And if it is possible in the future, permit-wise and structure-wise, then I think you start, if that is the case, I think you start to look at how you handle it, et cetera. In other words, is there a landing agreement with the, with the primary users? Is there a better place that you can stage some vehicles to wait instead of going down there and charging all down there at once? Then there was a heat wheeler down a couple of weeks ago that just completely didn't know what to do. And, you know, they think they're going down there because they don't want to be left, they don't want to be left on. So my, my point is, no matter where you do most of your barging, especially as a municipality, but even requiring contractors and homeowners to communicate and requiring/asking the bargers to communicate and coordinate better is not, you know, it may be difficult, but it's not unrealistic. It's not uncommon, it's not unreasonable. And if, if the homeowners, whether it be near the stone warp, near Sunset Landing, or near Bennetts Cove, they should have concerns and they should be addressed as is reasonable. Buffers, you know, visual buffers, noise, concern, traffic pattern concerns as far as people backing up the entire length of the road and maybe even a slight widening of the road. So this is not an easy one to figure out quickly like David said.
Would the board be interested in any sort of engineering review of our options? So what is the direction we should go on to follow? David, you have a motion regarding your suggestion to
I'd like to move, we set up a meeting with the two of us, I'm not sure which two. In Augusta, A S A P, what's his name?
Rob Wood.
I did, I'm sorry, I'm the, Rob Wood.
So are you talking about meeting with the D E P or DOT?
DOT.
So it's not Rob Wood. We can find the appropriate person to meet with. I think it might make sense to assign those two people with the new board in place after we have our orientation, that would seem to be a good way to go at it. Does that make any sense in terms of your motion, David?
It makes sense except I think time is obvious soon. I don't know, I, I guess we did wait a couple of weeks, but it's going to be really, really long, like a month. I just think December is going to be here sooner than we might.
So what's your motion?
Well, my motion is that, that we meet with M D O T, it's Rob Wood, is it?
He's DOT.
D E P, excuse me, D E P, excuse me. As soon as practical, and if it means bringing in the new board, we can do that. I don't know. I'd like to hear the opinions of others, but this is something you need to do immediately.
Carol, any thoughts?
I think we can take this up at the next meeting. This is the first, you know, it's been discussed publicly, and so I think the next step at the next meeting. And I'm not clear who you're saying a meeting, but DOT or the E P? The E P. I think that we, I, I think we need to discuss amongst ourselves what, before we set up a meeting, I think the select board needs to set up a proposal. And that would be my suggestion. I don't think just meeting with them will have We've heard from them, we know what their position is, and so if we want to come up with an alternative, I think we need to present that. And I would add, I mean, I'm not against meeting with the E P, but I would also add, removing the concrete lanks does not mean we can't use the coal for barging. We don't know what the condition might be, and frankly, my expectation is we'll be much improved after barging on top of concrete lanks all summer. So I, I think we don't have to assume the worst comes in summer. So I think we do need to pursue a solution for barging. But my recommendation is when the new board comes on at the next meeting, you know, maybe, or whatever, we discuss what our proposal is and come up with a written plan or proposal, or a verbal proposal before we meet with the department. Because there should be some consensus of the board before we meet with anybody.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And it makes sense to include the new board rather than
I agree in which the new board is on board.
I agree in which the new board is on board.
Okay. So we will have that as a future agenda item on our next event meeting, with the board. Go forward for that.
So that motion wasn't seconded?
There is no motion?
Well, the motion would be, if we do want to move it forward, that we discuss this on our April 19th meeting and discuss a way forward with the meeting with I keep thinking MDOT, with DEP regarding barging at Bennett's Cove.
I don't think we need a motion to add an item to the agenda. Okay. So we will have that on the?
As long as it's on the motion.
For the 19th, we'll meet on the 19th, that will be one of the items. That could be our first item, use that as part of the workshop, as we approach problem solving and who gets assigned or volunteers for different projects. Does that work for your direction, David?
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah. That work, David?
Yes.
That work for everybody else on the board? Carol's out here with you. All right. Any comments from the public? Jeff, and then to Hale, and then Jeff, please.
I guess I would just like to make the public aware that, you know, you just can't call a barge and get a barge anytime. You know, we have a monopoly barge operator for all of Casco Bay. He's also feeling pressure from Cliff, Gray Diamond, Long, he's all the above. He can only bring two to three trucks at a time with a very limited schedule, with tides, what containers are available. So it's not as easy to call up and get a barge. You have to jump through three different hoops and three different entities to make that happen. I just want the public to be aware of that. Another option may be, like you said, for the Bennett's Cove is having a, a town point person that the barge operator calls and says, "I'm arriving." You go into a Home Depot or Lowe's, you can't move a piece of equipment without a spotter and gates and barricades, and yet we allow a free-for-all with these HU little trucks, so on. It's almost like a traffic director down there when the barges are arriving. I've received the call, I'm down there, car's trying to come in, no, we stop the car, and they have to wait for the trucks to unload. Truck wants to load up, you have to stop, you gotta wait your turn, go down. Again, like Mark alluded to, a staging area, so it's being sensitive to the residents in that area. And then we are controlling more of the traffic flow in and out of, whether it's Bennett's or Stone Pier. Stone Pier is even more needed to halt traffic and to halt pedestrians and to have that spotter traffic guard in place. Would be something to talk about.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Sue Hale, and then Jeff.
I'm curious, that the DEP gave us the opportunity to move Bennett's Cove for December. As I understand it, I hope I'm here, is that this is a temporary solution. By December, we need to have a, a long-term solution for the whole island.
That's not right.
So what I would like the board of selection to do is to decide by December what the long-term solution is that will give us a window of opportunity to work on September, October, November, December, and bring this community together to rally behind it. Because my understanding, that you will get all the facts and your negotiations at the Gasta with DEP, but you need to have a social contract with the whole community. Because when you put that decision in December, what the final solution will be, you need the community to vote on it. We don't want to come in September or December, somebody send out, forget it. We have run from a past mistake, we do not want to repeat.
Thank you for that. One correction, we do not lose Bennett's in six months and 30 days. We lose the concrete slabs, which are called planks, at Bennett's. Those temporary planks that we put in place about a month ago have to be removed by six months and 30 days from the day then when you have, after they're removed, we can still use Bennett's in the way that we used to.
So you need assurance, you need to have some kind of reassurance.
But at the same time, so what I'm saying is, we don't have an emergency related to the end of that six months and 30 days, but we do, I agree with you 100%, and I think the board agrees, we have to move forward on an appropriate solution for barging. And it's not, in my opinion anyway, it's not just going back to the way we used to do it for the long term. We have to do something better. What then is, I don't think we know yet. Thank you, sir. And Jackie, could you, I should have asked you to come up, Sale, but I think the owl captured your comment.
Do you think the owl?
Captured him because of where he's sitting, but I think.
So it's okay if I said?
Yes.
Um, so the DEP made it clear, I guess during their two visits, that they felt that Bennett's Cove was not an appropriate long-term solution for barging?
Well, there were some junior people from DEP who expressed that opinion. One in particular, he's no longer employed by the DEP. But the head of the DEP has written a letter to the town, which is public record, you're welcome to see it. I think it was part of a packet at one point, that says, "We can continue to barge at Bennett's in the fashion that we have always barged at Bennett's, i.e. without hard improvements." If we wanted to pursue hard improvements, as I read the letter, please board members jump in, we would need to go through a NERPA permitting process to pursue such solutions. And they would be challenging. But I think that's, Carol, are you familiar with that kind of thing? Does that sound like an accurate interpretation to you?
I, I don't recall exactly what the letter said. I think my recollection is that it focused primarily on using concrete, these concrete panels as, you can only use them temporarily during less than seven months and a 12-month period.
Right.
So that's what I believe they responded to. And then the other thing is, they did say we could continue to barge at Bennett's Cove. They're sort of two separate issues. And as far as permitting, anything else, I don't recall.
It was determined that that use, barging, was not an activity that required?
A permit.
A permit.
Okay, that's right.
Which, in other words, when these planks come out, the same activity can continue without a permit directly through the state.
And, and the planks themselves were?
Correct.
As long as they're temporary, which means six months and 30 days.
Through this, yeah, through the state, they did not require. They, we did receive the proper permits through the town, a code enforcement officer.
So, for example?
No, I think I understand, you know, all of what you just?
So you know that the planks could go back in a year from a month ago?
Presumably, yes.
According to the DEP?
Another point that I'd like to make is that one member of your board also expressed, after one of the visits, that he felt that Bennett's Cove was not a long-term solution on record. I've expressed my concerns about, you know, safety on the road in the past, I continue to have those. The barge operator is in telephone contact with at least some of the drivers. And I think it was the day that the barge operator telephoned a driver and asked him to back up the roads because he was bringing a crane. And that was when I contacted Vika and recommended that some, you know, traffic help was indicated. The final comments is that there's already some deterioration of the concrete, and there's some rebar sticking out, i.e., you know, safety. And children have been observed biking down the ramp. I, I did not see that, but, um, yeah, so, um, perhaps an added dimension of risk.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the board? Okay, but we will have that as hopefully one of very few agenda items in addition to our workshop. Okay. Next item, we discuss the requirement of Bill Shane. As most of you know, Bill Shane has had his official last day as town manager of the town of Cumberland. He is sticking around to help the new guy get oriented for several weeks. As most of you, probably all of you know, Bill was instrumental in helping Cumberland, but especially in helping us during secession. From my observation during that time, Bill went out of his way to be courteous and provide information to us that was appropriate and legal for him to do, but he in no way tried to hinder our efforts at secession. And I think he's been kind to us in many other ways ever since then. So this agenda item is to discuss the possibility of some sort of noted thanks for Nat Tupper, we provided a gift certificate to the Chubig Island Inn, and two big coffee mugs from the historical society. Is there any interest in the board in doing something similar for Bill Shane?
Exactly that.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the same thing, same, same appreciation extended to Bill.
We need a motion for that, because it would be spending money approximately, less than $300,000.
Where will you spend it from?
I'm gonna ask you that question. Where, where do we take the?
Well, there wasn't a budget, something like, that's something that you would take out, ideally out of contingency. There is no contingency.
Right.
And so those expenses, a motion was made in the five weeks I was not in this position, and I ended up taking, taking it out, just the, the general office line out of the, the town administration budget, because there was no other area to bring it from. So that would be the line that I would put it out of.
Do you want to get a motion of that effect?
I mean, to be honest, I would feel more comfortable if we waited until July 1st, when we have a budget that wasn't so tight, where we're asking taxpayers to recover it. But if you want to get it out sooner, then by all means, that's fine. If, if we can wait until July 1st and we can take that out of the new budget, I would feel most comfortable with that.
Let's move that.
You can, you can.
I think a board member could make the purchases and then submit it to the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Can you do that?
I can do that.
Well, you need to.
Motion of that effect?
We need to, we need to make the purchases after July 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
You gotta wait till July 1st.
Okay.
I mean, you can, you can make a motion, just understand that I'll wait until July 1st to, um, to follow through with that motion.
I suggest.
Okay. Now, if you needed it.
Yeah, obviously, yes, it's mine.
Okay, I'll give you more. Waiting.
Good, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I agree with what you said, Bill Shane and some other councils over there were very helpful to the community of Chubig, in helping, not only helping us prepare for and make the decision of secession from Cumberland, which was no small move, by the way, and, and not to be taken lightly. And Bill was very, very helpful. He also came in at the tail end of the decision to keep Blanchard parking lot with the state domain, helping us obviously by owning domain, and the development of the Route 1 parking lot after Bob Benson was the town manager. And I worked very closely with all of those people, including Bill. Had many a meeting over there with Steve Moriarty, Jim Phipps, and Bill Shane. So I'm going to personally reach out to Bill to speak with him on behalf of all the meetings that we endured, I guess would be a good start. He, he's been a good town manager for us before we succeeded. He's been a good town manager for the town of Cumberland. And he actually started out as an engineer for the town of Yarmouth. And he's got some good qualities, so they're losing a good town manager, and they've hired another good one from people who've been.
Carol, did you have your hand up? Okay.
I just have a quick comment. And this is something for the board to think. Do you think that maybe he deserves something a little bit more substantial, especially if you're going to pull it out of the new budget to, because of his history that's more exponential, that potentially Nat Tupper, that he could, you know, he could?
I personally, myself, if I may, I personally think that you're accurate by saying that. Without himself being the board, Donna Damon and I also sent a couple of things on our behalf to Nat Tupper, besides what the town sent you, just because it's the same exact reason. Nat Tupper was also very helpful in, in helping save and secure our access to Yarmouth Town. Sure.
I think what would be a nice gesture, we, I don't know, like a part of it would be, or something where community members write something, Bill. And what I've seen done by other entities is a photo book that people write. So the pictures of Chubig, maybe before in Africa, whatever. I mean, if somebody, I don't have the manner what to do with that, but maybe you could respond to it. Make a photo book and then leave it out for the community to sign and, you know, say, nothing. I think that might be a nice gesture, because it's personal.
We can consider that when we talk about it, board, if we post meeting in July.
You can put one of the new board humpers on that task. Just.
Okay. Any from the public, yes?
Certainly, Bill Shane has been every. Bill Shane has been everything that you all remembered and acknowledged and want to show thanks. But it seems to me that he's still a very vital and highly experienced town manager, and he's someone to keep in mind to be able to give mentoring advice.
Great, I think so. Other comments?
There's currently, when Carol mentioned a book, I think I can.
Okay, just quick, okay.
The Captain McNeil might be.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, moving on from that, and we'll come back to that on a future agenda. Uh, other business, is there any other business?
Well, on the same track, now that almost everybody's gone, I just wanna thank Mark Dyer. Well, this is the last one for me, that. So this is the last, so that would mean that. We become a town. Maybe it's last, last. But at any rate, I just want to thank him for his many years of service and I know I've appreciated his. Experience and expertise on the board. Well, I've just been here, but. I think the whole community of Mark, uh. You know, thanks for all the work that he's done. Um, you know, I just want to express my appreciation personally and I think. Here we go.
Are there any others? Yes.
Um, I have an applicant um to a. Costa Waters committee that I meant to mention in the personal executive session. I don't know if you would rather wait until the next meeting or if you guys eagerly want to jump back into executive discussion um to discuss that real quick. Um.
So just a few ways. Okay, you care.
Uh, it doesn't matter.
Put it on the first meeting in July. But that's awesome. Good news. Um. Any other business? Okay, moving on to communications.
Um, I have a, a few things worth mentioning. Um, so. Um, one communication that we received was a freedom of access request um from a law firm, Judy Metcalf Law. Um, and the request um freedom of access was for public records relevant to eleven Zoob Lane. Um. Chris worked on gathering that information and um we submitted what was needed to them. Um, so that was one. Uh, the other was a notification from FEMA letting us know that we have until June twentieth, twenty twenty-four to adopt. Um, the um FEMA maps, which we have the ordinance that's coming up at town meeting. Um, and so. Um, that's the next one. Um, the, the next one is a communication from. Um, Herb Main as, uh, on the behalf of the finance committee. Providing to sub- or submitting um the uh kind of the memorandum outlining the committee's findings and recommendation. Um, and um essentially stating that their, their goals that they were tasked, they've accomplished. Here's the results and here are the recommendation. Um, and so I would like to make time um with the new board in July, probably first meeting, have that an agenda item. To, to make a decision in terms of what the board wants to do moving forward. Um, we received a communication from Ted Ballard in reference to um some of. Um, the uh changes um that were taking place and just letting us know um in terms of. Um, you know, putting the sign, emphasizing the pedestrians' walkway. Um, and then exploring with Land Trust temporary solutions to get a walking path a little bit more separate from the um erosion C well. So. Um, that was communicated. He was just letting us know and I know there are some information with the code enforcement officer that they're dealing with. Um, and then the other communication um I had received um was from Pam Curran. It was two separate. Two separate communications irrelevant to um the same thing which um, um things taking place down at Bennett's Cove. Um, I followed up with a response and then the code enforcement officer and I did drive down there today. Um, he took more pictures to um kind of document what he has from when he was there a couple of weeks ago to now to compare. And then he will follow up to our latest.
Any other communication?
Um, sort of on the house, it's on the action team. They have. Been in touch with wildfire and it's sort of, I think it's our forestry. So he is trying to be. Uh, on the twenty-sixth, I think, of the week for a public information development. Coming early in the day to do some wildfire assessments. The fun action team has been, and they brought the fire department into the loop. But the basic goal is to update. We have a wildfire plan circa two thousand and eighty. So far, they was figuring out how to update that plan. And then ultimately, we should in the town to apply for some. In my wildfire mitigation funds, which would be for clearing forest. So there are a couple of islands that are interested and would be invited along, I want to join us on that night. And I would encourage people to come. Think it's kind of the new thing that we have and really developed, but it's definitely. So the climate action team is sort of spearheading and working. And then the, the other thing I'll mention is the. Fun acting team is also working in the consortium of islands. On sort of coastal erosion issues. There's a program in mid-July that uh will be open as property owners, but we'll have a limited registration. So. There'll be some information during the month of June about it and then there'll be kind of a community conversation at the law. And um it's gonna kind of go through the entire summer and there'll be multiple opportunities for the public to participate. And I think, you know, some sessions that would be facilitated by your GMRI or. But we are working with Long Island, Great Island, Little Dock. But. Um, on this kind of coastal erosion issue.
Other communications? Okay, moving on uh to approve the minutes of May fifteen, twenty twenty-four. So who, third second? Second by Carol, all in favor? Name is. Okay. Item would be placed on a future agenda item, our future agenda. We've talked about it. What I've got on my list is um. Consider an engineering plant to the transfer station. Consider paper bag. Uh, is that just a word decision? Have that whole conversation. Um. Nonprofits and trash. Fee for, fees for trash. The three-town power agreement, we didn't power agree, we didn't talk about that tonight. That is um. As of yesterday, the final draft was available and we will need to at some point vote whether or not to approve that agreement. This relates to uh the uh addition of equipment to our current radio tower at the town office. That will allow sort of a backhaul to Cumberland and Yarmouth for their benefit. Uh, the additional equipment has a huge benefit for Chabig. And Cumberland and Yarmouth together are paying eighty percent of the cost of the project. So. The facilities committee and the fire department have judged it a pretty huge win for Chabig. Um, Bill Shane, we'll talk about that later and uh talk about the establishment of the finance committee is something that you can mention. Did I come, did I, this, anything that you guys came up with?
Um, yeah, I think all those are looking into July, but the next agenda will focus around Bennett's Cove and the. Um, the select for orientation.
And this is what we all forget, ground location doesn't match.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'll put that.
It's not really a suggestion for future agenda, but just a reminder to. Not let the parking um workshop discussion.
Yeah.
Get away from you.
The, is there a particular party when you're talking about or just?
I think it's mostly focused on someone more.
Thank you. Yeah. We've also got the ongoing conversation of cook, that's important violation.
Yeah, and, and you probably know, but more than well, I get invited to help you finish up with the parking. Uh, design stuff that's top of Indian Island, the hook. And Yang's Road, if you want me to help with any of that. Thank you.
Okay. Would you entertain a motion for adjournment? Motion by Daylin. Second by Carol, all in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Members of the public, if you're a member.